Good evening. The time is now six o'clock, 6:00 PM, and I call this meeting to order. Welcome to the September 23rd, 2024 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. Just a reminder, there will not be a council meeting next Monday as it is the fifth Monday of the month. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm and exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. Public comment will be heard on any item, on any topic toward the end of the meeting. If you wish to speak, please complete a form from the table by the door and give it to the clerk. You will have four minutes and be on the lookout for some small changes to public comments in the coming meetings. Please silence your cellphones. And this time, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to invite Pastor Greg Moore from Parkway Church of God for our city invocation.
Again, I want to express gratitude to our city government for the ability to start our meetings, acknowledging the power of prayer, inviting God's presence to our decisions and to our actions. So let us pray. Our gracious and benevolent God, source of light and love and hope, we are humbled by your countless blessings that you have shaped our journey with. Like John Adams, the second president of the United States, we recognize that our democratic ideals are deeply rooted in the principles of a Judeo-Christian ethic. Our society thrives when we honor the values of our constitutional republic. As we navigate the complexities of governance, we turn to you, oh God, for wisdom and for good leadership that reflects your divine plan. You have shown us the way to lead with integrity and with compassion. We know it is written, "For the Lord is our judge, our law-giver, our king. He will care for us, and he will save us," in Isaiah 33. We're called to action. We're called to learn, to do good, to work for justice, to help the down and out, to stand up for the homeless, to go to bat for the defenseless. And your message is clear in Micah 6 and 8, that we would seek justice, that we would love kindness, and that we would walk humbly before you, oh God. Guide us, as your word instructs us, to judge people fairly. May we be a beacon of fairness and integrity, free from bias and corruption, so that we would flourish in the land that you have provided us. We hold our city and the Delmarva region so close to our hearts. In these unchanging, difficult, and unusual times, we ask for stability and strength. We ask, God, that you would help us to experience the ability to be a pillar of resilience against the forces that would seek to diminish our achievements. We pray for all of these that serve our city well. We pray specifically tonight for Michelle Gregory, who is not able to be at the meeting, as she responds to her son's medical needs. We pray for your intervention and for your promised help as we call upon you. Bless us with your peace. We thank you for all that you've done for us, and we pray this in the spirit of unity and in love, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pastor Moore. On tonight's legislative agenda, we have our consent agenda, which will include the August 5th work session minutes and closed session number one minutes. We have four public hearings on Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-1, -2, -3, and -4. We have ordinance number 2889, ordinance number 2890, and ordinance number 2891. The first two for second reading and the first for first reading. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. English?
Hello. Good evening. I am very happy to say on the consent agenda that we have two sets of minutes. August 5th, 2024, we have work session minutes, and we also have closed session number one minutes.
Thank you so much, Ms. English. All those in favor of the consent agenda as read, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-1.
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Boucher?
This is tonight before you for a public hearing on this particular 2024-1. It's a resolution to amend SC-1-1 of the city charter to add that all references to the city or Salisbury and the city charter and the municipal code shall mean the city of Salisbury, a municipal corporation of the state of Maryland. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city charter demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment to keep provisions of the charter current, whereas mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code Annotated Local Government Article Section 4-301 as amended and SC-21-2 of the charter to amend the charter not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, the public general law or public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality. And whereas mayor and council find that an amendment to SC-1-1 of the charter is desirable to clarify the charter, and whereas on August 8th, 2024, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review this potential amendment to the charter and to offer advice and recommendation to the mayor and council, and whereas on August 19th of 2024, this mayor and council convened in public session to review this particular proposed charter amendment, and whereas mayor and council have determined that this amendment to SC-1-1 shall be adopted as set forth. And again, this was published as part of the agenda, and I will just call your attention to the one change we are making. We are adding the language that all references to the city, city, or Salisbury and this charter or the Salisbury Municipal Code shall mean the city of Salisbury.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Anyone wishing to speak in either of the public hearings, please stand at this time and be sworn in by our city clerk. The time is now 6:08 PM, and I do call the public hearing to be open. Seeing no comments, the time is now 6:08 PM, and the public hearing is now closed. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-1, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-2.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Charter Amendment Resolution 24-2. This is tracking, all four resolutions are tracking at the same time, which means that they were, that the ethic, or sorry, the election board convened in public session on August 8th, and this was presented to you on August 19th. This particular charter amendment resolution amends SC-2-2 of the city charter to further clarify the qualification requirement to run for council and to maintain a seat on council. And with the proposed changes, I will read what SC-202 of the charter would read. Council members must have been domiciled in the city of Salisbury for at least one year immediately preceding their election, and the council members from each district shall be domiciled and the boundaries of the district from which they are to be elected on the date of filing for election and must continue to be domiciled thereon during the term to which they are elected, must be at least 21 years of age, and shall be qualified registered voters of the city. The City of Salisbury Election Board shall be the judge of the qualifications of candidates for city council.
Again, anyone wishing to speak, please stand. The time is now 6:10 PM. The public hearing is now open. The time is now 6:10 PM, and the public hearing is closed. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-3.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Boucher?
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 24-3. Again, tracking like the same, going before the Salisbury Election Board on August 8th and before this mayor and council on August 19th. This particular resolution is to amend SC-3-2 of the city charter to further clarify the qualification requirements to run for the office of mayor. And with the changes that are before you, new SC-3-2 would read, the mayor must have been domiciled in the city of Salisbury for at least one year immediately preceding his or her election, must be at least 21 years of age, and must be a qualified registered voter of the city.
Anyone wishing to speak? The time is now 6:11 PM. The public hearing is now open.
Let's ask a question.
Hold on one second. Does it have to be, can, point of order, can, can any person here speak during the public comment period, or do we have to enter into any motion? Or is this?
Are you asking as a question of the member of the public?
Why just?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a clarification. Is it registered, you're saying? You're saying registered or qualified? I guess that's-
Registered voter. Voter?
Voter, yeah.
Registered voter.
Registered, okay. You're saying qualified, but is that, is that assumed registered? I assume it does. You can be qualified but not registered is what I'm getting at, distinction.
Correct.
Okay, so it's qualified, not necessarily registered.
The word registered is in the legislation. Correct. Tracks, like the council members.
Just curious. Okay, thanks.
The time is 6:12 PM, and at this time, the public hearing is now closed. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-3, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-4.
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Charter Amendment Resolution 24-4. This is a resolution to amend Section 6 of the city charter entitled Elections. There is amendment to SC-6-6 governing nominations and SC-6-9 governing the election of mayor and council and adding two sections providing for the requirement for write-in campaigns and certificates of withdrawal. So I will take each one in turn, and then we will, because it's all to this particular section or Chapter 6 of the charter, we can just do a public hearing with respect to all four changes, okay? So with respect to SC-6-6 nomination, we are adding the language that the certificate of nomination shall be filed under oath. That is the one and only change to SC-6-6 governing nominations. SC-6-9, the election of mayor and council, we are adding that they shall be in accordance with Maryland state law and regulations. So it will read as follows. All elections shall be held and conducted in accordance with the provisions of this charter, the city code, and applicable ordinances, which may include provisions for early voting and in accordance with Maryland state law and regulation. SC-6-16 would be a new section governing write-in campaigns, and it will read, "An individual who seeks election for any public office in the government of the city of Salisbury as a write-in candidate shall file a certificate of nomination with the city clerk in the form and by the deadline as required by Maryland state law and regulation. Any write-in campaign and voting for a write-in candidate shall be governed by Maryland state law and regulation." And finally, adding SC-6-17 governing certificates of withdrawal, that new section will read, "An individual who has filed a certificate of nomination may withdraw the candidacy by filing a certificate of withdrawal on the form prescribed by the State of Salisbury Election Board within the time prescribed by the board."
Ms. Boucher? Time is 6:15. The public hearing is now opened. Stand there. Ms., hold on one second. Ms. English, if you want to swear.
You raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is-
Just a really simple observation. There was something there about signing an oath, and I haven't looked at it, but I think I may have mentioned this before. Oaths can be somewhat intimidating to people to sign, particularly if they talk about penalty of perjury, et cetera. And there's various forms of affidavits and oaths, as I'm sure the city solicitor knows. One of them has to do with, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, which is not the same as an oath that says it is in fact this way or that way. I would suggest that it be that former type of oath that I mentioned, because you really don't want to intimidate people and try to keep them from running for office or participating in government, and there really doesn't seem to be any need for the more higher level, it's absolutely this way and I swear to it, type of affidavit. I don't know how it reads. Maybe she could explain.
Any other, in the comments? Okay, the time is 6:17, and the public hearing portion is now closed. All those in favor of Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2024-4, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. This time, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2889 for second reading.
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Boucher?
Sure. Ordinance number 2889. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 1.08 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Election Board to adopt recommendations made by the City of Salisbury Election Board regarding the application for mail-in ballots and the canvassing of ballots. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2889, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2890 for second reading.
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Ordinance number 2890. This is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 1.12, the Salisbury City Code entitled City Election Campaign Advertising and Finance. This is before you for second reading. There was one non-substantive change, if you recall, council president, you made that on the record. We did amend lines 23 to 25, which had previously included a typo to make reference to Chapter 1.12 as opposed to Chapter 1.08. So that is the only change since first reading.
Thank you. All those in favor of ordinance number 2890 with the reference to Chapter 1.12, please signify by saying aye.
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 And hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2891 for first reading.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2891, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Art Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $41,002 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for expenses associated with the Maryland Folk Festival. Whereas the city of Salisbury submitted an application to the Maryland State Art Council for financial assistance and carrying out community development art activities specifically to include assistance with the Maryland Folk Festival. And whereas the city has been awarded funds in the amount of $41,002 through the grant of operating, through the grant for operating expenses, excuse me. And whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland State Arts Council defining how these funds must be expended, and whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by council of the city. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council. Section 1 of ordinance 2891 reads, "Mayor Randolph J. Taylor is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland State Arts Council on behalf of the city for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $41,002." Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget D and hereby is amended as follows, A, increase MSAC revenue account number 10500-424105-XXXX by $41,002, and B, increase operating account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is $41,002.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. All those in favor of ordinance number 2891, please signify by saying aye.
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 And hearing non-opposed, the chair votes aye. This time, we will shift to the public comments portion of the meeting. Again, you have four minutes for your comments. Robert Taylor.
Hello again, Robert Taylor, 50-year resident of the city. I'm going to go gallamowfry tonight because there's a bunch of things. First, I want to say it's great to see Councilwoman Jackson alive and personal and up front here tonight. So, good luck. And secondly, I also want to give another shout-out, I did this at the county council last week, to someone in the audience tonight, Dr. Basheart, for his very excellent piece that was in the Salisbury Advertiser last week, and it's, believe it or not, as of this afternoon, still available at the Acme Store and perhaps other places. If you haven't seen it, it's worth getting. The other things I want to mention is, I want to again give thanks and congratulations actually to Mayor Taylor for his action on the Mitchell Landing mess. And by that, I mean, he hung tough. He got the state authorize, not authorizations, but pledges of the money to rehabilitate that facility, which at least two of our former mayors, Day and Heath, let go to pot. And then, you know, now trying to make a deal with the council president's firm, which is great if they were stored. That's, that's good. So I want to again thank him though, because he hung tough, hung tough, and I think it was very fortunate, because if the council vice president, Ms. Blake, had signed those documents, I believe that would have been unlawful. I can't say that as an absolute legal opinion. I don't look at it that much anymore, but seat of my pants, my stomach tells me that that would have been illegal, and it would also probably have been a title problem. So I think he saved the city, let's call it some embarrassment, if not money, by hanging tough and signing the documents after he got the commitments from the state, which was part of the deal. I also want to just reflect a little bit on what's coming up with the proposal by the development group Salisbury Town Center Apartments. As you know, they were unsuccessful in court getting their agreement from the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals turned them down. They went to court. The court rejected their appeal. Now they want the city to double the density so they can get what they couldn't get in court. You may have witnessed some of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week where I believe the, Mr. Poitak, I have a tough time with that name, was there to give a general description of what was going to happen going forward with that request. And Brad Yellis tried to insinuate himself into that conversation. I know, I believe the council president and I believe one other member was there. I've witnessed a lot of things in my time, 50 years of law practice. I've never seen anything like that. And I give a lot of credit to Chairman DeShiel for saying, "No, you're not on the agenda tonight. Sit down, shut up." He didn't say it in those words, but it was very clear the meaning. We're going to have to get into this. It's going to be on the agenda. And as you know, the university now wants to do a 1,000-seat auditorium where the library is, and that changes. It was bad enough selling all the parking lots for development after doing away with the requirement that they had to have onsite parking. That was bad enough. But now, as of early May, we know that the university wants to do the auditorium and performing arts center. The council, last week, county council, declared the library to be surplus, which allows that transaction to go forward, and they also approved the first $330,000 of money to begin the design work at the Ward Foundation, which is necessary to move the library out to the Ward Foundation. So the university then come in and take the library site and redevelop it for the, what I just mentioned. So that's, that's everything I have for tonight, and good night and good luck.
Thank you. Just a point of clarity, council president, being myself, I don't, it's not my firm for the relation that Mr. Taylor was talking about. At this time, we will pivot to administration. We'll pivot to administration for updates and comments.
I just want to say, if I didn't see you out there at the festival this weekend, I talked to a ton of people. It was a great time, perfect weather, great talent, and it was really successful. And I appreciate all the staff, all the volunteers, all the sponsors that participated. Very unique event, and we had a good time. So if I didn't see you out there, I hope I'll catch you next year, so.
Thank you. We'll pivot to council comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Jackson, since you, you've had time to rest your-
Voice.
Your, yeah.
Oh, I have. Glad to be back.
Yes.
And I'd like to thank everyone for the phone calls and texts and everything. I have been under the weather for the last year or so. One more hurdle across, and then I think I'm gonna be all right. I think I'm gonna be the bonded woman before it's all over with. But, you know, whatever it is that has to keep me here for it. I think on September 12th, I attended the Park and Rec City, Park and Rec Meeting at the Waterside Park. And I was so glad to hear that we will be getting a pavilion with bathrooms. It was just exciting to hear that because we do need that in that, in that community. But we're also looking for more committee members. We're also looking for persons with a vested interest in the parks, like a stakeholder in your, each community. We're looking for people who to, I mean, if you don't even want to be a committee member, we would like to see you at these meetings so we can know. And I'm gonna tell you what else we can discuss, having youth be a part of this. Because who could tell you more so better than a youth or a child what is needed or what they would love to see in their park? Because most of those parks are for families and children. So we had a great discussion, and they even took me back to the edge of the park. I didn't even know it was a boat ramp. And long as I've been over there, I never knew it was that, a boat ramp back there. And I went back there, and they were discussing the different kind of plants and flowers and trees. And it was just an awesome meeting, and I enjoyed myself at that meeting. But like I said, we're looking for more members to be on this committee. If there is a youth that would love to be on this, this committee, and if a parent would allow them and attend the meetings with them, we're welcoming them. And if anyone would love to be, an adult would love to be a committee member, I'm going to send them to Julie English, our city clerk. Our number is, her number is 410-548-3140. I have it memorized in my brain. We would love to see you come out and help. I had more information, but I rushed out of my apartment and left some of it. But like I said, if you have a vested interest and you want to be, you're a stakeholder in our, in your community, please come out to our meetings. If you contact Julie, she will be able to get in touch with our chairperson, Mike, to let you know when our next meeting, I think they're on the second, second Wednesday?
Second Thursday.
Thursday. Second Thursday of the month, yes. Get me right, get me right, because I've been out of sorts a little. But they're at 6 o'clock, and we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I guess glad to have you back on my, on my left.
I know you are. I'm glad to be back.
Councilwoman DeShiel?
I have, it was a busy week, very busy week. We had the dedication of the sculpture, which you have to go look at. It's right on the corner across from, the library sits here, and it's the next corner. The library sits here, and it's the next corner. It's part of, and KT could give you more information about the whole process and what they're working on, but it's called Perpetual, and the highlight is to see it at night, when you see the rings of this stump with the sprig that's representing rebirth, regrowth kind of thing. So that was last week. Rain put everybody in the library, but that was okay, it worked well. The President, President LaPree at SU gave her annual State of the University address last week, and it was pretty overwhelming what has happened at the university and things, you know, the buy-in with the students, and their whole purpose is getting community involvement, the students getting involved with the community, and it was a really nice packaged presentation. The legislative breakfast that our county executive hosted last week had the delegation, the Eastern Shore delegation, present to hear the concerns. And the one thing that they stressed was with all the bills that come before them, people have to lobby and really participate and, you know, show that they're interested. County council had, they gave an update, what the county council is hoping for. Public safety, Rob, you would be aware of this in terms of the sheriff, the state's attorney. Jamie Dykes does an amazing job, and some of the things she shared about juvenile crime is pretty overwhelming. And higher education, we heard from Salisbury University, Warwick, and local as well, and then the municipalities. So it was very informative in terms of what they're hoping for. We know that money is a big factor, and they kept mentioning that, but at least we had the delegation there that was willing to listen and hear what everyone had to say. The last thing is, junior, if you need something to lift your spirits, if you want to volunteer at the Junior Achievement Building where the old Kmart used to be, just to give you an idea, this is their 40th year, and in the last year, they served 12,525 students. Wow. And it's not just local. That was my first question, is it just the academic students? Is it just one school? And the answer to that is no. All the students participate, they cover 10 school districts, and we, they need volunteers. So the first time they'll need a volunteer is in October. They bring in the whole grade level, and I have to share real quickly one funny comment that a friend of mine that volunteered was taking this child through, child, he was in fifth grade, they were talking about finance, and, or middle school, and he was talking, they were talking about finance, and they said, "Well, you know, you have this much money, and you have to do this, this," and they said, "By the way, don't forget you have to buy diapers." He said, "I didn't want this child. Why do I need to buy diapers? I need to spend my money on something else." So it's a huge awareness piece of reality, and it's something that really every single child needs. So easternshoreja.volunteerhub.com. So, busy and really, really informative.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman. And as the VP for the board, I hear that a lot, so yes, we do need volunteers at the center, and it's wonderful. You definitely will, you know, the time you serve is definitely well worth it, because, you know, you definitely fill up your tank. Council Vice President?
Oh, gosh, there's been so much going on. It's just really nice to see that the council is out and about, and I know Michelle has been to a lot of events, too. Each one of us have different areas that we go out in. So by the time it gets to me, it's a lot of things have already been reported. Yes, April, welcome back. We have been praying for you. Glad to see you. You look great. You look really good, as always, anyway. As always. Okay, so a couple things. I've been working with our new city clerk for a while on the Roberts rules and the code of conduct for the council. We were, hopefully, we were trying to get it done early in September. We had a few things that delayed that. One, we had a retirement of the city clerk, and we had to hire a city clerk. Then, then my kitchen decided to go up in flames, and so we've been a little sidetracked. So we are working on that, and I think we also pulled in our intern to help us move some of that along. So we'll probably have an extension on that. I don't know how long. We'll meet this week and get a kind of a date for when we would like to make our initial draft, I would say, initial draft. So basically, just if you are in good health, please, as always, donate blood. You could also donate plasma. Consider being an organ donor, always think about giving the gift of life. And that's it.
Thank you. Council Vice President, yes, as she said, we will be, just be on the lookout for our updated rules of order. We will be buttoning that up, and then, of course, you all as a public, will have a chance to look at that, and of course, give comments before we make that final. And along with that, we've been with our clerk making some revisions and some of those things, along with public comment and just input. So we want to streamline things, make sure things are great on your end and our end, and that we're just, that we are making the best use of your public time and dollars, of course, so be on the lookout for that. But I do want to give a shout-out to our city clerk. So one of the goals that I had, and she did as well, is to get the agenda back posted on towards our Wednesday time. So we did post it last Wednesday, I think about 1 o'clock. So we are getting to that goal. I'm definitely proud of her for reaching that goal that I had much sooner than I thought she was. So again, we're trying to, we want to make sure that things are buttoned up, and again, it makes things a lot easier. So again, thank you, city clerk, and thank you, council, for your help with that. A couple things, again, my council members touched on, we, this past weekend was the Folk Fest. I had so much fun, but I had more fun watching everyone else, you know, enjoy themselves and get free fun with the music and entertainment and arts. It is beautiful. Of course, our local artists, so I had a good time this whole weekend, and brought some friends in, and just, again, I love it when people are having fun right here in my hometown and in my city. It is amazing. So, and people would say, "There's nothing new in Salisbury." I was like, "There was a whole thing, you know, going on." So we had a good time, and I even, I think I saw the mayor tap his foot a couple times. So, yeah, it was definitely a good time. Last weekend, also on Friday, we had the inauguration for Dr. Deb Casey, so that was a beautiful ceremony, and definitely, we are blessed to have her in our community. She is boots-on-the-ground and definitely a true leader, you know, leading institutions. She has a lot of ideas for how to transform that institution as well, so excited for what's to come in her tenure. Tomorrow, we have the neighborhood walk for 5 to 7. I actually will get to walk to that neighborhood walk, so definitely glad for that. I think that's the last one of the year, I want to say, so definitely looking forward to that. And last Thursday, we had planning and zoning. Couple things, the Night Watch LLC, this daycare center, they are an overnight daycare center, I think the only one on the Eastern Shore, they've been operating for quite some time. Dr. Amy Stewart and her spouse, wonderful organization, but they have outgrown their current space on Riverside Drive, so they're going to come over to District 2 on Philip Morris Drive, so glad to have her there, and exciting things with that. And just a couple other, just annexation requests and sign requests, you know, of course, those are fun, but not as fun as getting, you know, a nice big daycare in the district. So we did get a here's home update from the planning department, so that is, if you go to the planning book, so our briefing book, the actual numbers are in there, so we are, we're able to see and have the statistics on, and the actual data as to what development should be coming in the pipeline, and then kind of seeing where they are. Some of them will be falling out, or some of them will be dropping off. So we've got a general, pretty good idea of the number of units that should be coming online here in a couple months, two years. So I think that is it and all I have. Of course, of course, stay safe and enjoyable. Again, it's, fall is near, so be sure to grab a sweatshirt now when you go out of the house. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Perfect. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing unopposed, the chair votes aye. This meeting is now adjourned.